The February 21st special meeting of the Board of Education is called to order. And let me read the statement, just one moment. Okay. For the safety of all of those in attendance, the display of signs or banners will not be permitted. In addition, masks are required to be worn during the meeting except when speaking at the presenter's podium. Please take a moment to locate the nearest exit in the event of an emergency. In the event of a tornado, you will notice designated areas highlighted on the maps located on the front and back walls. Tonight's meeting is a meeting of the board held in public, not a public hearing or discussion with the board. Patrons will be invited to share comments as part of the public comment portion of the meeting as outlined in Board Policy B CBI. The time is set aside on the board's agenda for members of the public to share their thoughts. It is not a time for dialogue with or question and answer session with the board. If your comments require follow-up from the board or district staff, that will occur after tonight's meeting. The district assumes no responsibility and/or liability for the information shared during the public commentary. These views expressed are solely those of the speakers and do not necessarily reflect the views of the Lawrence Public Schools. Please be respectful of the presenters and the board as we discuss and deliberate the issues and topics on tonight's agenda. Comments or actions that are disrespectful of presenters or disruptive of the board's discussions and deliberations, use of foul language, or threats to the board or others in attendance, will result in immediate removal from the meeting. In addition, USD 497 provides public access to our board meetings through live streaming. The platform used for this live streaming has acceptable use urals for content on its sites. While the district does not delete or hide board meeting videos, the streaming platform may elect to do so if the content of the public comment or any other portion of the meeting is found to violate the platform's acceptable use rules. Thank you for your cooperation in these areas. Just bear with me. Next order of business is the approval of the agenda.
This is Shannon. I move we approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
This is Kay. I second. Hill?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Kadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Jones? Newsbaum?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Looking at who has signed up for public comment, it looks like every comment is related in some way, shape, or form to the budget. So to keep on with the agenda, can I have someone read the public commentary comments or notice? And then we will take public comment related to the budget after we hear from the district, from the presentation from the district.
Do you want me, you want?
Anyone.
Okay, all right. Public commentary, the USD 497 Board of Education welcomes public comments and thanks you for taking time to talk to us about our policies and procedures. We set aside this time during our regular meetings to hear from the public. This is your time to share your opinions. However, complaints about specific staff or students will be heard by the board in executive session in order to protect the privacy of the individuals to be discussed. While you are not required to share your contact information, we ask for that information so district staff or the board can follow up with any specific concerns you may have. The board president will invite comment on topics not included on the agenda at the beginning of each meeting. Comments related to agenda items are welcomed after the board has had the opportunity to discuss the topic. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Next, I will turn it over to Dr. Lewis to give us some background and introduce his team.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Board President Hill, to other board members, community members. As Zach sets this presentation up, I first of all want to thank Kathy Johnson. She's not here tonight, but she was here at our last board meeting. You know, she has retired, but she has been giving us some days to kind of assist us with some of these budget challenges. And if you know Kathy, she was very reflective after the last board meeting and then along with Cindy began to go to work on some potential options for us. In addition to Kathy, I also want to thank our Budget and Program Evaluation Committee, all of its nine subcommittees, and there were some other board appointed committees that assisted in those proposals that were presented at our last board meeting. This includes our Equity Advisory Council, our Parents of Color Advisory Team, Native American Student Services Parent Committee, my Superintendent's Advisory Council, District Site Councils, District Student Equity Council, and the Lawrence Special Education Advisory Committee. A huge thank you for those individuals giving up their time to share their thoughts around some of those proposals and recommendations. And so if you recall, our board officers originally called this special board meeting tonight for the purposes of discussing some potential budget savings. In addition, the purpose of this meeting was to consider a resolution to publish for public hearing regarding potential school closures. However, at its February 14th board meeting, there was consensus from the board on not closing schools for next year. Members of the board wanted to continue to discuss identifying $7 million in cuts to bridge the budget shortfall of an estimated $3.2 to $3.8 million and improve certified and classified compensation. So tonight, the Board of Education will be discussing how to move forward with the budget reduction process. And so if we take a look at our overview tonight, the board will receive information from our completed thought exchange. Cindy will come up and discuss some budgetary considerations. Samree will come up and talk about some staffing considerations. And we'll also take a look at the upcoming board meeting calendars as the board begins to think about timeline in terms of some of these decisions. And what we are also looking to accomplish tonight from administrative standpoint is to gather feedback from board members that will be used to articulate a process for identifying, but not only identifying these items, prioritizing and approving these budgetary cuts for the 2022-23 school year and also efficiencies for the future. And so with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Zachary Conrad, who will walk us through our thought exchange results.
Good evening, Board. I am Dr. Zachary Conrad, Executive Director of Data and Technology. At the end of our meeting, the Equity Analysis Meeting, we sent out a thought exchange for community members to participate and provide their opinions and feedback moving forward. Here's the question that they were asked to respond to for that thought exchange. We had just over 1,700 participants. You could see the breakdown. About 13% were students, 45% were parent or family members, 28% identified themselves as staff or teachers, 1% were administrators, and 13% identified themselves as community members. There was just over 1,900 thoughts and over 60,000 ratings. Here are the top thoughts that surfaced through the thought exchange. All three are directly related to district administration, specifically at the ESC. I want to note two things on here. These are, well, three things. These are opinions and thoughts that are put in here. They're not necessarily based on facts. And I want to just identify two examples of that in here. Another thing that I want to point out is that these were the top thoughts. And we saw before that only 13% identified as students. The students' top thoughts were directly related to Avid. Almost all, sorry, almost all of the students' thoughts were related to Avid. And so that is a distinction here when you break it out by the different groups, we see that difference. We do not want to spend time going back and forth on opinions, but it is part of our responsibility to point out misinformation. And so this bottom thought, which was ranked third, USD 497 has a more top-heavy administration than Olathe, and they are twice as big. We do want to spend just a minute here correcting some misinformation that we are concerned may be circulating in the public space. And so here we have the Olathe leadership chart, and we have USD 497's leadership chart. This all comes from a document that Patrick Kelly put together and sent around to the board. I'm going to go ahead and click on that so we could just kind of explain how this document was put together. First, Patrick was kind enough to list out 18 school districts and find all the resources associated with those 18 school districts so that we can go through and look at the payroll. All of this is public information. And then the organizational charts. Now, not every organizational chart is set up the same way that we do or that Olathe does, but you are free to click through and look at all the other organizations, these 18. And so I found this chart, this table, very useful, and I appreciate Patrick's work in putting that together. So on here, we can view these two side by side. And we just want to point out that the varying levels, here you have up to Assistant Director on Olathe's side. There's 46 in leadership positions compared to 22 on the USD 497 side. You can see they have a level of Assistant Superintendents or Associate Superintendents. There's eight there. We have two chiefs. So this is an example. We just want to make sure that we are providing factual information, public factual information as best we can to the community. We also looked at the way that the thought exchange works is they look at what you have ranked or rated, and then they compare it to those who rate it low and those who rate it high. So here we see some differences. Side A looked at cutting admin positions, and ESC side B was really on the other side of closing schools. Another thing we want to note here is in the middle section, right, where they both agreed, we want to correct misinformation that's out there, specifically regarding nepotism. We do have a policy. It is linked there in the slide. The superintendent, let's state that again, has no relatives working for the district. You could see in the middle section that a large portion of this community has some misinformation around this. And we want to make sure that we clear up that misinformation. The superintendent does not have a relative working for the district.
So Zach, may I ask a question? Okay. So this is exactly why I had reservations about thought exchange in the first place. I mean, I guess on the one hand, it's good that we know what people are saying that's factually incorrect and we can correct it. But I guess I am struggling to see how any of the information that we're pulling from this thought exchange is going to be useful to me as a board member when people spent all this time ranking stuff that's completely factually inaccurate. And so help me find a bright side to this because honestly, I don't really see that this is useful.
So if you'll remember back to COVID, we pushed out quite a few thoughts around that, and we did receive statements or opinions that were not true. And we would go through and we would remove some of those so that it would take it out of circulation. But it was important for us to know the community's feeling around safety and reopening and are they sending their kids? In this situation, we left those statements in. We did not weed them out as closely as what we did prior to this. But it is still giving us some idea of where the community stands and what their thoughts are, where their beliefs are. And so for better or worse, it does give us somewhat of a glimpse into what is circulating out there.
But what is circulating is factually incorrect. So I mean, I'm definitely.
Again.
I'm definitely seeing this in the emails that are coming to the board in advocacy around what we should do. And I'm super concerned because I know these things to be not true based on my years of experience and the information that I personally have reviewed and what has been provided at the board table. And yet, we're being asked by the community to make decisions to do things or to not do things based on this because this is what everybody believes is true. That's a problem.
I agree.
If I could just say one more thing on this and then I won't say anything because I always have so many thoughts. I think it's important, you know, when we are trying to handle something as significant when it comes to the budgetary cuts that we have to deal with, that's going to impact so many lives, that we know what people are saying so we can address it head-on, you know? So the fact that this is circulating is very problematic. It's problematic to me too, you know? But the fact that we could say, yeah, okay, community, this isn't right, you know? And just call it as it is and move on. We can quickly move on in being able to look at rebuilding some of that trust as we're making some of these hard decisions. And so sometimes as we're walking through this and yeah, we have to face the ugly, this is the ugly. But now we can say publicly, this is not right, and move on.
I think a good example will be on the next slide. I'll wait till you get there. But I think it also allows us an opportunity to educate the public on this misinformation so that they can spend their time on factual information that will be beneficial. This information about the superintendent and nepotism is, you know, it's sad that I have to even defend this, you know? How racist can that be perceived? Do all black people look alike? Are all black people related? So I think what you'll see on this next slide is useful information for me, particularly that middle column. That gives some information that I think we can act on. Go ahead, Zach.
So again, we have two sides. We have a side A, side B. We do have opinions on both sides about school closing. And then that middle column, we have people, programs, and resources that have direct contact with our students should be prioritized, right? Schools should allow students to thrive. Those who impact our kids daily should have priority, not admins who have zero contact with kids. I think as we think about this, we are admins. One of the main purposes is to make sure that they have, that teachers have as much time as possible with those students. That we do a lot of the paperwork, the administrative stuff, so that they have that time, that they're not burdened with that. The structure is built this way. School systems across the country are built this way because there's state regulations. We're bureaucracy. There's state and federal regs that we do not, there's decisions that have to be made around curriculum. There's those things that we protect that time so that they can do that job. And we need to be able to keep that into perspective of what we're doing there. But at the same time, that should be a priority. We should be, yes. Yes, that is the priority.
So on this one, it shows on side A, closing schools does not provide equity. So don't close schools, basically. Side B, close schools now, consolidate schools. But then there in the middle, particularly that second one, school should allow students to thrive. People, programs, and resources that have direct contact with our students should be prioritized. So that's the work that I see that both sides have in common in terms of prioritizing our students.
Dr. Lewis, can you remind me what the 1.3 means and the blue star under side B or Zach, whoever?
Yeah, so we have side A in blue and side B in green. And so that comment that was made, close buildings now, the B side rated that one very highly. The A side rated that one very low. And that's how the distinction was made between who's on side A and who's on side B. I'm going to turn, if there's no additional questions over the thought exchange, I'm going to turn it over to Cindy.
I do have a question, Zach, if I may. So you mentioned that the student ratings mostly focused on Avid. Were there any other themes in the student ratings that were notable? And then were there any themes within the staff ratings that were notable that the board should be aware of?
So a lot of the staff ratings are here. And then really Avid, Avid really was. So a lot of the staff ratings are here, and then really Avid, Avid really was the theme with the student rating.
And what about Avid was, they wanted to keep it?
They did not want to lose Avid.
Okay.
Yep.
And what we can do, we can share, and with the board and the public, those top thoughts per category, where there are some differences there.
Just a question about the student comments related to Avid. Can you tell them, tell us, I mean, it sounds like, and I am, I've observed Avid is a strong program, and so this isn't a comment on Avid, it's a comment on the process. If the questions are all related to Avid, I'm asking you as a researcher, doesn't it kind of lend itself to this idea that perhaps the students were instructed to contact the board about Avid?
So I don't want to make any assumptions about that process. Obviously, that could be one hypothesis, it could be they really love Avid, there could be a variety of reasons. That could be most likely, just looking at it at a glance.
It seems most likely, yeah.
But but I couldn't tell you for sure.
Okay, thank you.
So I don't want to say definitively.
Good evening, Cindy Frick, Executive Director, Finance. We wanted to take a look at the budgetary requirements that we have going into the 2223 budget. School district budgets are based on a legal max calculation. For general fund, that means taking our enrollment, our student FTE, times the waitings, or and the waitings, times the base state aid per pupil. In LOB, the calculation is based on a percentage of the general fund, but excluding virtual state aid. And so this base state aid per pupil amount is determined by legislature and then becomes part of law and is stated in statute. School districts can legally spend only the amount of that legal maximum calculation. Going back to the estimated shortfalls that we have, for this year, we have a loss of funding of 1.7 million from declining enrollment and virtual ed, and decrease in waitings due to students not coming back from last year. Going into next year, the decrease of 1.5 is realizing our drop of enrollment. And again, this 3.2 million total number is unaudited, and that's why we also present the high side, what we think would be the high side of that, at the 3.85 million. Okay, hold on.
Cindy, may Cindy, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Does the, so the drop in enrollment numbers, do you, we also need to add on to that 3.2 to 3 million, the estimated increases in utilities for the gas service and our insurance, those are other numbers I've seen on the slides, and so I'm wondering if that's also in there that kind of pushes towards the 3.8 million?
Right, right.
Okay, so that's about 300, am I remembering correctly, about $380,000?
On the utilities?
I see, I see some nodding heads, yep, okay.
Thank you, thank you.
I have a clarifying question. I've gotten questions from community members about the, just kind of talking through how to talk to folks about this. So under the the two bullets at the bottom there, where it says the loss of funding is 1.7 million from declining enrollment, and then the estimated decrease is 1.5 million for the the weighted funding, can you just talk about that?
Sure.
So that folks understand that a little bit more?
Yeah, because that does look like it's kind of including the same, but the 1.7 million is declining enrollment, that is from this year's virtual program, that students are not attending as much as they have in the past, and a decrease in waitings. And so when we look at the per base state aid per pupil and how our enrollment, our enrollment looks back a couple years, and then it catches up to us, as the enrollment declines, we start to see that in the budget calculation in later years, but the 1.7 is from declining enrollment specifically in virtual ed right now. Does that help? Okay. Okay. And then, pardon me? That one? Yeah, okay. And under the other considerations, we're looking at what kind of wage increase the board would want to do for 2223, that would need to be included in the budget that we're getting ready to prepare. For example, on the classified schedule, an increase to the current matrix, if we increase the base rate on that to $15 an hour, which has been spoken about, that could cost up to eight point, or 9.8 million dollars. And we say up to, because it would depend on how we applied that increase, if it's across the board, if it's only to people who do not yet make $15 an hour, or someplace in between that. Also, a 1% increase is approximately 182,000 for classified staff. On the certified schedule, there are discussions that are estimated to cost around 3.9 million, and a 1% increase to them would be $560,000. And these these costs are, the SABR increases plus the employer cost. And on the last slide here, we have just a breakdown of, so you can see the representation from certified, classified, and administration, and this is on a 1% increase to wages, which totals approximately 825,000.
Yes, I just had a, just a clarifying question, I think this graph is really helpful. So that 182, 182, 182,000 is that increase specifically for the classified staff solely, and then the 560 is specifically to any, any employees that is identified as certified, is that correct?
Yes, that is.
Perfect, thank you.
And then that 1% increment kind of gives you a building block, if you wanted to look at additional numbers.
And then also, just for clarity as well, on the last slide, when we had that 9.8 million dollars, I just want to make sure that the public understands, because they've been hearing us talk about this this conversation around 3.8 as a number we're looking at to balance the budget.
Right.
When we see that 9.8 million, it also be, can become part of the narrative that that's what you need to get to $15 per hour, and so without actually seeing the range, if if you were just bringing everyone up to $15 per hour, and we're not impacting the matrix across the board.
Right.
It's my understanding that that calculation is $900,000, is that correct?
I believe the $15 an hour applied only to those who don't currently receive 15.
Yeah.
Yeah, is in the 2.5 million range.
Okay, thank you. Oh, okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have to ask, I'm sorry, that number is very different than what I have previously heard Sarah at negotiations, so maybe I'm misunderstanding that, Cindy, the, so I just want to, I see, Andrew was just showing me something on the PowerPoint, but you're now saying just to get everybody to $15 an hour, it would be 2 point some million? Okay, because this summer, we definitely heard 900,000. That's a, that's a huge difference, so I want to understand that number, and it's probably my misunderstanding, but it's, it's, so at some point, if we could.
Okay, I'll do that, thank you. Great, thank you.
Good evening, Sam Reed Evan, Executive Director of Human Resources. While Sarah's getting that information, I just wanted to update all of you on the notification for certified and administrative, administration employees that that for nonrenewal is May 20th, it always falls the third Friday in in May each year. So, you know, as we, this is the time of the year that HR starts having staffing meetings with our, with our building administrators, so it's, this is very important that we know any nonrenewals that we're thinking ahead of time, possibly before the, in that March board, would be wonderful to know that. I know our employees right now are, they're a little nervous, as I'm sure all of you know, that the emails that you're getting from all of our employee groups, so we, we are asking for that information in March. Also know that our pool is getting, is smaller with teachers, as you know, across the nation. Teachers are leaving the field at alarming rates, and so they really need to start making some decisions for themselves and their families. Also, you think about, just letting you know, our last career fair that we had two weeks, two weeks ago on Saturday, we only had about 60 certified teachers, where in the past, we've had 100, over 120 always attend that event. So the pool is getting a lot smaller, so just some food for thought there.
Good evening, I'm Patrick Kelly, Chief Academic Officer, and we're going to now move into more of your discussion, hopefully. And one thing we heard, listening to your discussion last week, was how big this task is, and how maybe overwhelming it is, and also the the amount of time that you have to make some of these decisions. And so in thinking about that, we thought it might be better to, you've probably all heard the phrase, eat the elephant one bite at a time, right, and to sort of break this into some phases for you. And it would be our recommendation that we would follow these phases, and start with phase one, that is your budget deficit. Cindy went over that earlier, it's between 3.2 and 3.85 million. Make those decisions first, and then move into a second phase of other priorities, and those priorities could be towards cash balances, those priorities could be around raises and compensation for staff, and you have some flexibility within that one. We don't have a lot of flexibility, unfortunately, within that 3.2 to 3.85, I know that doesn't make a lot of sense to say we don't have flexibility, but within that range, that's something we we really need to do. But those other priorities, you can adjust through your discussions. And then we also heard last week a lot about, like, long term, what are we thinking? How do we rethink the system? How do we look at this differently? So we would really suggest those three phases, and what I'd like to do is sort of, with your permission, facilitate a bit of a conversation tonight, and give you some questions to talk about. We're going to take a ton of notes when you share what you think, how we should move forward in these three phases, and then we would come back to you next week with a process written out that you could adjust, comment on, and finalize to move forward. Does that sound okay? Kelly, you look like you might have a question, I want to make sure.
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready.
Okay. So the first question we have is, what tools does the Board of Education want to use to make this decision? So you have things like the proposals from those BPEC subcommittees, you have options that have been put together, but there's other tools that you might like to have. We've heard a lot about how do we involve the community in some of those conversations, so we need to hear from you, like, how do we collect those things? What role would you like, if any, for district administration to look at those, put a dollar number on them, tell you whether, you know, this is doable or not doable, or how it might affect some of the other proposals, give you pros and cons? You might have some ideas of your own as board members that you'd like to share out. I think we should talk about how that would look, and how that would be brought to the rest of the board. Those are just some ideas about what tools you need. I think what we'd like to do now is just stop there with that question, and let you all talk about it. Again, we'll take notes, answer questions as we need to, and then move to the next question.
Thank you, Patrick. So as we are thinking about the questions that district is proposing to us, remember, we have to be clear, and we have to be decisive. We can't, and we have to be clear and decisive, I can't stress that enough. So who wants to offer feedback first? Or would you like to move to the second question and think about it a little bit more? Either way, we talked about this last week, time is of the essence here, we don't have a lot of time, but we do have, legally, we have an obligation to balance the budget. Go ahead.
I think at this point, for me, and I, obviously, this is my personal belief in all of this, and other board members, I'm sure will feel free to disagree with me, I think what I want in this phase, what tools I want, I want our building leadership and our district administrators to come to me with the list of stuff that we have to do to balance the budget for this next year, prioritized by what you all think is going to be the least harmful to students to do. I think we've spent a lot of time over the last couple of months in particular, received lots of input from the community around what they value. I, I feel like we have a lot of information about that question right now. What does they have any value, what do they want us to focus on? What I don't feel like I have a good handle on, based on what I've seen so far, is out of all of that information, and even out of the BPEC proposals, what things in the professional educational opinion of administration and our building leadership are even doable? So an example of that for me is the proposal around, around library media services. On paper, that looks like it might be something to consider, but I know that our library media specialists, for example, play an integral role in the structure in our elementary schools, and so it may not be feasible from an educational standpoint to even consider making those cuts. I want you to tell me that. And and I think that's what, that, those are the tools I need at this stage to make this decision in phase one about what we do immediately to be legally in compliance with our budget.
Yes, a clarifying question, so that is to the phase one, which was specific to the 3.2 to the 3.8 million?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. For me, the one thing that I would like to know before, the the question, I'm, I'm getting hung up on the word tool, so I'm going to just tell you what information I might need. So for me, I would want to know the, any workforce reductions that might be associated with those cuts, and if those reductions included, like, if you were going to reduce a position, and we had a, a staff member who had an endorsement that they could go somewhere else, I would want to know that information when we made those cuts, how are we best protecting the positions of the staff members that we have, to make sure that while we're doing things like having the career fair, that we're prioritizing the staff that we have in terms of filling positions that might become open as you restructure? And then additionally, for me, similar to what Shannon has said, my priority really is an understanding, what's the impact on the students? So if Shannon used library media specialist, learning coaches might be another one that we could look at, understanding what is, what if, if you've identified an impact for the student, how will you offset it as an administration?
Can I, go ahead, real quick. So I just want to make sure, before we move too far down the road, that there is consensus among the board, that we'd like building administration to come back to the board with the list prioritized by least harmful to students for phase one, which is to get to the, I'll just go to the higher end, the 3.8 million that was recommended for phase one, is there a general consensus among the board that that's the approach that we would support, and that we request from district?
I would concur with that.
Okay.
Can you define building leadership? What is that, would that be inclusive of the leadership team, the?
You have to ask Shannon.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
I'm looking at Patrick, because I really would like administration's input. I'm presuming that if we're talking about program cuts, that you're consulting with your directors of elementary and secondary ed, with your building principals as part of that discussion to put this together. Is that an accurate presumption?
What I heard you say was building and district administration.
That is what I said, but... Would that be what you would typically do? Okay, thank you.
So building and administration. So, yes, yes, yes. Kelly, yes? Andrew?
I feel okay about that, not great. I still would hope, I'd rather see all the BPEC things that did include more of a stakeholder, at least more of an inclusive stakeholder map, than just building and district admin that delivered the BPEC suggestion. So I'd feel more comfortable at least seeing the buffet of BPEC suggestions more than just now going through the lens of building and district admin deciding of those, what is best going forward. So I'd rather see, the tool I'd rather see is at least all the BPEC suggestions, and like, kind of like the option 1, 2, 3, lay them out, work from there.
Thank you. Paula?
Just, yes, I do agree with that. And plus, looking at the thought exchange, only 1% of the administrators had given their feedback. So I think that's an alignment that we would, that I would like to hear from administration, and more from teachers. Because so many of the comments that had come through the email were not just from community members and parents, but were also from teachers. And I don't know how you would include teachers, more teachers, diverse teachers, in those discussions. But I'd also like to hear from those unheard teachers that have a lot to say, but don't necessarily make it to the table.
Thank you. So it sounds like there is general consensus that we'd like for building and district admin to bring us back a list prioritized by least harm, and engage with the stakeholders in various places that you need to. Okay.
Can I ask a question about that? When you say varying places, does that mean, like, say, the schools' coalition?
No, no. I'm talking about people who work for the district. I trust leadership to know who to speak to, to get to that answer. I mean, this is what they do for a living, so... Whatever it means to get to, get a list prioritized by least harmful to the students, I would, I would think they would know who to talk to, to get that list. Okay.
So, thank you for that. Let's look at the next question. So you've probably heard the old adage, and sometimes it gets attributed to Abraham Lincoln, but that's not where it comes from, about sharpening our saw before we cut a tree. If we have five minutes to cut a tree, we're going to spend three minutes sharpening the saw. So, the second question is how you'll decide what cuts will be made to meet that Phase One goal. So, there's a lot of ways you could do that. We could prevent you, this list that you've asked to prioritize list, and you can vote on it, yes or no, thumbs up, thumbs down. Your group could prioritize that list, and then look at those priorities, and look at that. You could decide those things that you feel like, you know, while none of these cuts feel good, those are the ones that you can identify. You could decide that, you know, one board member might say, I'm okay with 30,000 here. Someone says 20, and someone says 10, and then you have some conversation. There's all kinds of ways to make that decision as a board. But I, but I think as you think about how to move forward, how you're going to make that decision is important. So we asked that question of you to think about a little bit.
All right. Any initial thoughts?
I'm going to go back to the tool one, because I wasn't able to put my voice out on here on this one. So just when we're kind of talking about tools, one of the things that I have heard, and I think would be helpful, is when we're looking at general funds, kind of that whole breadth of general funds, which includes more than just our codes for our staff wages. So I think something like that would be helpful when it comes to, you know, are there revenue ideals such as increasing fees for certain activities that students are participating in that can help offset, you know, some of these expenses when it comes to paying for something like an athletic director? I think having information like that is helpful. I don't know how you would formalize it and call it a tool, but I'm sure some, again, that's something that you guys are really good at, is taking those words and creating a tool. So I just want to put that out on the table, because I didn't have a moment to say that a few moments ago, so.
Any other comment on the second bullet point?
I think it's a process question, like how we will vote. So presuming that from the first exercise, you brought us options or considerations that you would support or advocate for or not. We have, in the past, voted for a complete package, as opposed to item by item. So if there were more contentious items in this case, those could be drawn out, while those things which seem to have the least amount of concern might be able to be passed collectively by vote, because we'll have to ultimately vote. Are you, what are your, what's your reaction to that?
I hear that. And so that, my first reaction is, would you want us to go over that 3.85 number? Because if you pull some things off, you may not meet that, that number. And we'd need to know, like, do you want us to give you $5 million worth, four and a half? And I know that's a hard, and that's just a starting place, right? But, but I think if you're going to, if you want to give yourself the option to pull some things off, we have to go a little higher than what our deficit is.
And then if you pull things off, does that then fall into the category for this Phase Two discussion, right? Yeah, I think this is a really tough question, because I... I think that it goes back to what I said earlier about how the educators in our district know more about the impacts of a particular budget decision than I do. And so if you all are coming to the table, having vetted that through the process that you're using, and you're saying to me, we think this is the best-case scenario we can come up with, I'm not sure that I want to sit here and go line by line and pick that apart. Because then that runs the risk of you've built a carefully crafted balance, and I'm going to just stomp all over it, because I don't like this, or I don't like that. I'm not going to like any of these decisions that we're going to have to make. So I think this is a particularly hard question to answer for those reasons. I would presume that the options that you're bringing forward are going to be informed by the administrative study that we've talked about, the Title IX evaluation that we've talked about, our strategic plan priorities, and input from our, you know, all of our different areas, facilities and operations, food service, and like, all of that, all of that packaged together, so...
To that end, Shannon, would the recommendation, because of the reasons that you mentioned, because we're not in the buildings, doing the work, would the board's preference be for administration to bring forth maybe two or so options? Because there, there will be like a domino effect, and this position affects this position. And they will know what that will look like, and how the students will, and the staff in general will feel in that particular proposal or that scenario.
I think I might lean toward what Patrick suggested, which is, you got to aim, sort of like when we set budget authority. Aim high, and then assume that that will get us beyond the threshold that we need to be at for that first phase of legally necessary cuts.
Right, but do you want just one option and pull things? Or does the board want a couple different options? What's, what would be most helpful?
That's really hard to answer. I know I'm not being specific enough.
I know.
I'm thinking on my feet here.
I know, I know.
So I think, you know, for me, as just one of the seven on our team, it is helpful, as you're saying, to have, kind of like we just did, have, you know, two to three proposals that we're looking at. It's also really helpful when we have those line items in there. And I think that, now that I've had some time to sit with this, second question is, how will the board decide what cuts? I think for me, it's kind of going back to, you know, how is this cost, whatever cost savings that we're looking at, how's that shared across our different buildings? So it's not on one side of the town, or whatever. Or then I think about, again, that impact to the students that we've talked about before. And then lastly, it's just, you know, what is that, the quality of working conditions to our staff? And so regardless of what comes to us, I feel like those, those three things are just going to be important to be communicating, keep communicating back. But two, what Shannon was talking about, was Erica was asking, yes, I do agree that having two, two to three options, I'm more of a threer. That's just kind of how I roll, but I think how it was set up the last time is really helpful, so.
So the only, so I appreciate where you're going with that. The only thing I would say is that when we ask them, when we ask them to provide us the different options, there are only so many things that we can cut at this point. So to get to that first 3.85, you really would be asking them really just to shift around, you know, certain, I mean, I don't, I don't know that you would get three distinct options.
Yeah.
So to me, that having a proposal that is a bit high, in which we could say there are things in it that we are not comfortable with, gets us back to that one, that singular option, which is a little different than what you're saying, but still allows you to make the choice that you might need to make to protect whatever priorities the board has set related to strategic planning, or equity, or other components around the workforce.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah. So I kind of lean with Kelly on that.
Okay, and so as a board, we are, with a reasonable amount of certainty, confident that we can have this board discussion and eliminate different line items from, to get...
I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful that what, that what comes from administration is, is like, here's, here's the set of stuff that we think in, in this next fiscal year, we have to do to balance our budget.
Okay.
And, I mean, I'll just, I'll just name one of the things that's coming to mind as we're having this conversation. There may be varying thoughts on this board about a cut like the gymnastics program, right? That's been in all the BPEC stuff. If that were on your list, you may have board members who would pull that off, right? So perhaps the strategy for administration is, don't put that on your list of the 3.8 million dollars to start with. And see if you can get there in other ways that you know are more likely to be sustainable and align with all the priorities that we've been talking about. I mean, to Kelly's point, I mean, if we, in the, in the BPEC stuff that we've looked at, you know, we're basically, we've basically said to them, you have option three. Option three is your, is your list, right? Because of the conversation that we had last Monday. So maybe there's stuff that's not on that list yet, that you are, have identified, or are in the process of identifying, that you would add to it. But I'm not sure that, I mean, you can kind of look at that list and see exactly where the most likely places are, that you're going to go first for the 3.8 million dollars. You're going to adjust ratios.
Yeah.
Going to have multi, we're going to have multi-age classrooms. We're going to probably share building leadership at some of our smaller buildings. Like, there are some pretty obvious things that are bigger dollar things that we're going to have to do in order to avoid getting down to that list of things of, we're going to cut $8,000, save $8,000 by cutting novice orchestra, or we're going to, you know, get rid of middle school basketball teams, or some of the, some of those smaller dollar things, I would imagine, are not going to be at the top of your list. So... Is that helpful in terms of like framing, like, what I would expect to see that you're coming back to us with? That's what I would be looking for, is kind of the, these are the most obvious things that we have to do in the next fiscal year to make this work as we go through the Phase Three process that you're going to have us talk about in a bit.
So before we make that official request, I want to make sure the best of the board agrees with that. So providing, the district will provide one list, $5 million. They know how to prioritize it. And prioritize by least harmful to students, is that the approach that we all agree on?
The only thing I didn't hear in what you restated was that the potential to go outside of what BPEC identified still exists. So like, for example...
I don't think that was, I mean...
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm saying it for clarity purposes, that, yeah.
I want to make sure, because that was a question I was going to ask. Is the board comfortable with administration offering maybe some other things? We wanted to make sure that administration and the BPEC subcommittees wasn't overly heavy in those administrations, right? We had a fairly balanced mix to that. But we may have some suggestions that go beyond those 29, and I'm seeing heads nodding like...
That was mentioned at the board meeting last week, so, yeah.
And kind of to Shannon saying, you know, I would be hopeful that some of, some of the things that would be coming out next is like, with, in partnership with those meeting, with building leadership, so that's kind of what I was thinking. But Erica, to your, your question, I just want to reiterate that you were talking about that 3.8 that we're looking at initially for the first phase, because I just heard five, I think, so I just want to make sure I...
I thought the board said, aim higher.
Okay.
The list would be like 5 million, and we would whittle it down if...
Okay, thank you, yeah.
All right, number three.
Yeah, and one thing I, if I can just make a comment on something that was said there, like, we hope that you predict, we do our best to predict where you all are at. That's in the proposal we're going to give you. It's very hard to read minds, right? And you may not all be in agreement. So we'll do our best to provide you a prioritized list based on the values that we hear here, and then you can adjust it from there. The last question, and is probably one of the tougher ones, believe it or not, is your timeline. You heard Samree talk a little bit about when we do have to let teachers know if we're going to non-renew contracts. I've put here, it's maybe a little hard for you to see, but this is your calendar. We're on February 21st. And I put orange sticky notes on all of those dates that you currently have board meetings scheduled. We circled March 28th, which is our recommendation. We want to honor the staff that we have, and how disruptive this is for them, and how we, if a decision can be made so they can make decisions to support their families, we need to do that as soon as possible, and I know you all agree with that. But that also tightens up your timeline significantly. So I want to just offer this, like, when would you like this proposal? When do you hope to make these decisions? And if there's other meetings you need to have, we might want to think about when those would be.
May I offer a reflection, Erica? Okay, I would be completely comfortable with March 28th for Phase One. I would ask you to let me know whether the board should be looking at having a special meeting, say, on March 7th or March 21st, to talk about the... to talk about the Phase One and then move immediately into talking about the Phase Two. And do we need, do we need to complete that work by March 28th? Because it seems that there will be additional staff impacts to consider.
Yes, I mean, yeah, I assume that, I mean, I can only guess right now, but I'm guessing that, you know, it all depends on how high you wanna go in that Phase Two and what those impacts will be.
I guess that's, I would maybe like some reflection from the negotiations team on those thoughts. Did you wanna start or do you?
I was, I felt letting you go.
Only if you feel comfortable. I don't wanna put you on the spot.
No, it's fine. We met with negotiation, with PAL CWA just a few hours ago. Well, maybe a couple of hours ago. And we had asked to meet after March, because we weren't sure what the timeline or the process would look like in terms of negotiations. But I think this is in alignment with that thinking, unless I misheard that wrong. Kelly?
I would say that's in alignment. The only, the only thing I would caution, I guess, is that if, if the, and the thing that is, I'm a little bit confused about is why we would just phase, just, I know we have to get to the 3.8 or whatever range is there, 3.5. But if we are looking at increases in compensation for our staff, why would there be a second proposal post that date if it also has impact on staffing? Does that make sense? Like, because I think I'm now understanding that you're talking about phasing in board budget decisions, and that's not been something we've historically done. We haven't been, we've looked at the budget comprehensively. I don't know why you would make a Phase One, Phase Two decision. You might have top-tier decisions you have to make, and then these secondary decisions you might consider making for the budget. But why would we make decisions past the 28th related to staffing?
You bring up a good point. I mean, we were just trying to find a way to process this for you all a little bit, if others. I mean, we could do it all together, all at once. But one of the things we've heard, you know, we heard like, I don't know what the 7 million means. And so sort of stopping at that, this is our deficit, and then thinking about what, how much deeper we wanna go.
To me, it's a proposal. So, I mean, this is just me, but it's a proposal for negotiations purposes. Going past the 28th does become problematic for making those decisions. It also becomes problematic if somebody wants to be in the, in the pool of looking for employment. So I would think you would have a proposal that had like, this is what, this is the, you must do, plus here's the, so we're still back to that same process.
If we put those two processes together, we'd need to know how high you wanna go. Because if you wanna cross anything off that list, it will eat into the total.
I think for me, when I look at the March 28th date, I just think about, like, I was like, okay, that seems kinda far out there. Because it seems like, you know, work that, you know, we'll continuously do, week by week, meeting by meeting. And so I think about, with any big projects, you have those touch points, right? And so considering that it's the 21st now, the 28th just seems kinda far, far out for, to complete phase, this phase or no phase or this next step. And so, but then my question gets to, how much time does your team need, you know, so?
So would it help if we looked at, I think Shannon had mentioned it earlier, look at a March 7th or a March 21st board meeting for one of those phases?
I jot it down, March 7th, tentatively.
And I think here's where it gets tricky, right? We're thinking about that next, that next tier of budget reductions to free up dollars for compensation. But typically, we don't settle negotiations until well into.
May.
May, June. We've gone even, gone as late as after the start of the following school year, so.
I mean, for me, in terms of like really wanting, I think we probably need to get a meeting. I think we had an extra meeting on the books with LEA. So we kinda have an idea of where PAL would like us to go based on our meeting today and just to have a solid meeting with the LEA before the 28th. Erica might be helpful, and we can probably work with them on that. So that if you had a special meeting on the 7th, we could update the board on any, any, any negotiations. Can I get Samree's input on that? As it relates to negotiations?
Are you asking Kelly? I apologize. Do you need an extra meeting for negotiations?
I'm just wondering about, in terms of like, there's the, any additional dollars that the board is looking at saving past the 3.8 is really either about reserve funding or it's about wages. And what I've heard from Dr. Lewis and from our community is that there is a desire for there not to be a continued freeze on wages. So that means we have to go over 3.89.
Yes.
But we haven't had that conversation with the unions, so.
We haven't, and know that when we start, when we start our March meetings, it's every other week.
Okay.
So we did add that extra meeting to meet twice through the month of June. Does that help you? They're not on our schedule yet, but we did decide last time at the table that we would start meeting every two weeks.
Okay, do you think that that's enough time for us to?
You know, it, you know, we've always, in the past couple of years, is that when we've gotten to a point where we're kinda done and tired, we do come back even the next week. So even, I know at times we've added more meetings just as we go along too. So it's not like, we could, we could start and see where we go and know as a team, we're like, no, let's come back another day. Let's come back next Thursday. So we've done that a lot too in the past, when we're kinda getting pretty close and we wanna see that finish line, we've, we've added more meetings at that time. Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I just wanna circle back. Does that change the direction that we gave previously about, first it was, let's find what's necessary legally, which is a 3.8. And then we said, let's do five. Are we back, are we now to 7 million? Is that what I'm hearing? Or understanding?
So we haven't had that conversation with the LEA, so I kind of understand what PAL is going. I'm being careful not to negotiate on, at the table here. So I would say that we would want to look for the maximum amount of savings that you can find in the proposal without putting necessarily seven or eight or, and I don't mean to be vague, but I mean, it's knowing what is the amount that you can get us to, that you would be comfortable with as administrators, that we can ensure that we are being good partners with our, our unions.
Does that not get us back to where we were last week?
Yeah.
I think for me.
That's not helpful. Like, we have to be clear and we have to.
The question was.
But does negotiations, does that process drive this process? And this is truly a question. Does the negotiations conversation drive this process?
Historically, the budget?
Not historically. We're not historically right now. We're at a place where we have to think, do things differently if we have to, but it's not violating a policy. Given everything and the timeline that we have, does this, and again, this is consensus, does the board agree or have thoughts on what happens at the negotiation table driving this timeline? And driving what proposals get put or presented to the board under these circumstances and this timeline?
For me, I was still back at where we were just a moment ago with the phase thing. So I, I think they are independent.
That's, okay, thank you.
So Erica, for me, because I'm still the new member on negotiations, for me, I don't feel like negotiation is driving this timeline. So I do, I'm still getting used to the dates and when things have to be, when things work through the unions that we partner with.
I meant driving the, the amount that we're looking at. I might've said timeline. I think I.
Yeah, I think you said timeline.
So does, what the conversation at the negotiations table, does that drive, does that take, does that shape or inform, if you will, what proposals that administration will present to the board under this timeline? I think this kind of both, because time is a consideration as well.
So we don't negotiate the budget. So that's not what, we don't do that at the negotiations table.
I understand that.
So the piece of the question right now is that whatever additional dollars we give, we are talking about wages and increases in wages. So I'm asking the board to consider maybe, and again, this is just direction from the, from the administration, which is what has typically occurred, that we look at, what is the wage, what is the, the, I don't know that it needs to be 7 million, I guess is the, the part that I'm saying. It might be more, it could be less. But I'm saying that the recommendation from you should include what you believe we can optimally do for our staff.
Okay, and I just want to go back to what we said previously. My notes are getting long. We also said, the first bullet point we talked about, having a list being presented to the board, prioritized by least harmful to students. My interpretation of that is direct impact, least harm to students. So is that now off the table? Are we looking more at indirect impact on students?
I don't, I don't think so, because I think, I mean, truth be told, just about everything on that list of cuts is, this is where my, my view of what we are talking about with the budget maybe is not in alignment with some of the things that we've heard from the community. Every, if you think about how 85% of our, our budget is funding, our funding is. Staff, thank you. And we have 21 buildings that we are serving students in, maybe 22 actually, if you count East Heights. Very, very few percentage-wise of the people that work for this district work in this building. And a very, very few percentage of the people in this district work at the F and O facility. Everybody else works in a school building. And so, so I just, I look at that list of cuts and it's, it's all related to students in one way or another. So so I think that the, I'm trying to process what Kelly is saying and think about the timeline and what we are asking you to do. And it, what I am hearing is that we probably need to have you come to the board with, you know, the 3.85 million plus, probably all at the same time. And that that probably, the deadline for the board to make decisions around that set of proposals probably needs to be March 28th in order for us to honor our obligations to our staff to let them know what in the world is happening next year so they can look for a new position if they so choose, after they have heard what we are planning to do. But what I heard Kelly say is that because we don't negotiate budget, you may come to us and say, we tried really hard to find 7 million, but we can only get to 6.8. Here's the list. And that that would be acceptable. Or you may come to us and say, hey, we could identify up to $8 million worth of cuts that we could make. And that gives us a little more wiggle room in the budget and negotiations conversations. And that would be acceptable.
That's exactly what I meant.
Okay, all right. Sorry, I started out so inarticulately, but I'm glad I finally captured what you were saying. I think, I, I think that is what we have to do. So if other board members are in agreement.
I think I need personally someone to like just reframe what exactly we're doing, because now I'm a little lost. So Erica, you're really good. You've been really good at that.
Erica, I can take a stab at it if that would be helpful.
Yes, please, thank you.
Sure. So what I hear you all saying is you would like a list, a prioritized list of proposals that is as far as we can go, as deep as we can go. You want to hear what the repercussions of each one of those are. I will tell you, we could go very deep on each of the repercussions of each one of them. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be abbreviated. I mean, we're gonna do the best we can to give you that information. You would like that long list and that you will then prioritize that list and vote on. You may take things off of that list, is what I heard you say. Anything over 3.85, right, would give you some flexibility towards cash balances, classified pay increases, certified pay increase. So there's a couple of options that you have there with those dollars that are over that deficit amount. And you'd like us to bring you that list all at one time. Is that what I heard you say?
With firm recommendations, like.
Yeah, yes, yeah, of course.
So like this is, like, this is what we think is really not in the best interest of the district, but you could do it because, I mean, those.
Yeah, I think there's gonna be a caveat, that everything we're doing, we should be doing.
Correct.
Right? It all is here for a reason.
Yeah.
And that everyone, even what's priority number one, is going to hurt kids.
Correct.
Right? I mean, that's, because we wouldn't be doing it. But this is the situation that we're in, and we'll let you know as much as we can about each one of those items.
And I would probably add, just an add on that, is just to reiterate, if we could also be looking at ways we can generate funding through other means as well. So, so we're not just looking at it from a cut standpoint, but that's my.
And so Patrick, did you say proposals with an S?
I don't remember.
Thought I heard an S.
I think I heard one proposal. You didn't want multiple options. It's one list.
Right.
Right?
Okay, I just wanted to.
Check in with my colleagues, yeah.
Make sure, okay.
And thank you for saying what you just said about how it's all, at some level, gonna be hurtful in some way. That is, we're doing, we're doing all the things that we do now for the benefit of kids. And there is not, I have not seen a single thing on that list that I thought, oh, that's easy. We should stop doing that. Maybe, maybe the utility savings, yes, we should probably do that. That's not harmful, but everything else. Or any other options that you put on the table. Because as far as I can tell, to the extent that we are spending dollars, we are spending dollars on things that support needs that we have identified through all the processes that we use to help our, our students. And it's just, there's not like any magic place in our budget or operations that we could say, well, clearly, this is what we should stop doing, because this is completely unrelated to students and their experience in our buildings. That, that just doesn't exist. So I appreciate that you shared that.
So Patrick, we talked about not phasing this, so Phase Two.
So I'm gonna skip Phase Two, okay? I do wanna ask for a little bit of clarification on your meetings, because I heard that you wanted some public input. Probably, we don't wanna, I don't think I heard you say, we wanna come on the 28th and people see that for the first time. So we probably wanna have a meeting, and I heard March 7th shared out as a, as a time to maybe see that list for the first time, get some reaction. Let you think about that list a little bit so that you can develop your own thinking and have plenty of time to think through that before we come back on March 28th for decisions. Is that what I heard?
Yes.
Does that give you enough time to do the work you need to do? Well.
We work at the pleasure of the board, and so we will do our best. I know, that's a, that's a tall order for, because I mean, these are gonna be tough, value-based decisions for us to make. for us to make and recommend to you. But that, that's what we need to do. All the Dr. Lewis.
Does it make more sense to do the 21st and the 28th?
I don't think we have to stick to Mondays. So.
That's true.
Can we, I mean, the Friday before spring break is kind of cruel, I think. Maybe that Thursday, the 10th, that buys a few more days at least.
The one day I cannot do.
You what?
That's the one day, I facilitate support, a support group that day, so.
What'd you feel?
I mean, if I have to get somebody to.
Will this plan tentatively for the week of the 7th, between the 7th and the 11th?
I'm good with March 7th.
That's probably not going to be enough time for administration. They just vocalize that, so.
Three days, that's only three days from the 10th, I mean.
That's three workdays, which they can get a lot of work done in that time.
We want to do the 23rd.
The 23rd?
The 23rd, yeah, I can do the 23rd.
So, I, I like the, that ideal of the 7th through the 11th because I think it provides more time to consider and think about as well as if we decide that we would like community input or involvement, gives more time for that. The other note that I was kind of curious about is, are there any thoughts or suggestions about how or if we would facilitate that, like how we would facilitate that if that was going to be something we would do?
So, I don't know actually, in thinking about this, we probably don't need to decide this right now. We're getting the sense from you. I, I think Dr. Lewis, we'd like to talk with our team and sort of talk about what seems reasonable for us. Another thing we could do is we could release it publicly without having a meeting. Right, and share that this is when it's going to be released. We could put it on the website, we could share it with families. You know, we could put out a press, those type. I don't know that we have to have a meeting for that, but we can talk about that. And as I promised, we'd come back to you next week with a full detailed plan of what this will look like. Does that seem okay?
Yeah, the only reason I ask that because one of the things that I have been picking up on is when we don't provide guidance on how people, how we want the community to get involved.
Yep.
Community finds their own way on how they want to get involved. And so, if we provide some sort of guidance, I think that could be really helpful.
Yeah, I have that in my notes and will include how community would give feedback.
And I do think if the week of the 7th is too soon, if we're still planning on having a special meeting, I think the 23rd would be good, a good date, so.
It's not just the, the cuts, obviously, we'll need some time, you know, to look at where to cut, but also the impact of those cuts. We don't want to spend a tremendous amount of time making sure that there's supports of whatever, you know, the cuts are. You know, so if we're looking at multi-aging, looking at what type of PD will need to be provided for staff to get ready for that.
I would rather that we have a timeline that gives you the time you need to do all that rather than the board pushing for a timeline that makes you feel like it's rushed.
And they'll, they said they'll let us know what, what's feasible. So, we'll, we'll just go with that. And then, you'll let us know when we need to have a special board meeting for the discussion.
Can I just add, because the, the classroom consolidation made me think about this too, that there might be that you're bringing to us what, where you see there to be savings, but then subsequent to that, like in April, you come back and say, actually, teachers would need a para in the room during that, or we definitely would need a learning coach in a building that was doing that where we were piloting it. I do think that we make those decisions that, on the 28th, but there's still, you can still come back and tell May 20th, which is the date that's circled there, to make tweaks. It's, you're, you're asking for the board to make the kind of sweeping decisions. And then you will make some refining. So, I wouldn't want there to be like if you were doing some, like the looping classrooms, I wouldn't want you to feel like if, if a teacher needed a para for that to work, as an example, there was one in the classroom that I was in as a kid, that that would be something that you could come back to the board with and we could adjust the budget in those smaller ways. Does that make sense, Patrick?
Yeah, it does because some of the cuts that are in that list may impact other ones.
Right, exactly.
So, as you choose your priorities, that has impacts. Sometimes that's thrown off numbers.
Right.
As we've tried to figure out like which thing is there and which is not. So, I appreciate recognizing that flexibility that, that we'll get as close as we can on the 28th, but there still may be some adjustments going forward.
That feels good.
Okay. So, congratulations, you get to skip phase two. Those are all there. But let's talk about phase three. We heard a lot of discussion at your last meeting about this is an opportunity to rethink things. Kay, you've brought up tonight, like could we think about fee increases? We typically increase fees, it's a board in July. Prior to that, there are also some equity impacts that we should talk about, about increasing fees. And I know that's also a priority for you all as well, is when we increase fees, how does that hurt some of our families differently? And what are the impacts of that? So, when you think about those things, they might be in this category a little bit longer. So, when we think about everything from a magnet school to how do we draw more people to our community, that, we might be able to figure something out by March 28th, but I'm going to guess we're going to be in a cutting mode, not restructuring mode. So, the first question that we'd like to pose to you is how will you involve, gather input from stakeholders? So, we did an entire strategic planning process many years ago where we visited out in the community and we gathered ideas. That's a labor-intensive process, that's a lot of meetings. How do you want us to gather? We hear that there's lots of great ideas out in the communities. And yes, there are, that's great to hear. And we appreciate the collaboration. But we've got to operationalize that. We've got to collect that information, determine how to move forward. How would you like us to think about that as we move forward? What processes would you suggest? This is a big question.
So, I think for me to be able to answer this question tonight, I would have to know a little bit more about what exactly the input was that we were asking the community for because that process would look different. It might also mean that the board would direct the administration to consult with someone that can help with that process. If, you know, depending on what exactly it is that we were talking about. So, if you're talking about restructuring in terms of like a magnet school, that's a different conversation than if you're talking about school consolidations. So, for me to be able to adequately answer this question tonight, I would feel it premature. But I do like that we're thinking about what does that look like? And then, maybe coming back to, to the board with, with some recommendations after you've had time to talk to people who specialize in community input in that area. And I know that we have some internal expertise for sure. And the model we used for the strategic plan is a, is a really good one. But also looking to see like if you are already too thin administratively to be able to take that kind of work on, is there some consulting that we need to do in the past? In the district, we have done that successfully in some cases.
Kelly, I love the, the fact that you were talking about that. Because I was like, yeah, that actually sounds really good. Because we, one of the things that I've been hearing over this last month, it just, you know, you guys are tired. You know, the work is, is hard, there's, and the time is very limited. And so, I, I've been thinking, you know, when community members are like, hey, you know, we want to help with this. And it's just like, how do we connect them, you know, to you? If, if this is something you're looking into, but you are stretched for time. So, I agree with my board colleague on when it comes to giving those recommendations for you. And like how would that would be, how would that be most helpful to you when we are getting that information or we are getting that outreach? Versus like these, right now, we're doing this email game, we're forwarding emails to you. And that's, that's super fun because I can imagine how many emails you get in a day. So, getting some recommendations from you guys on how you'd like that process to go when you have identified this is where we need, need help when it comes to like looking at certain things. I think that would be really helpful. So, you guys identify a need, you do the call for help. And then if we get things sent your way, but whatever that looks like.
I think one of the, you brought up some good points, Kay. So, thinking about community input, Patrick said that hosting those types of like strategic planning events is labor-intensive. Where do we want district leadership to focus their time? That's one thing that we have to be taken into consideration. And so, one of the ways the board could possibly be helpful is the community emails us a lot. We hear from a lot of people often. And so, keeping a list of recommendations or suggestions from the community. And then instead of sending the district leadership an email every time something, someone emails you, put it together, organize it into categories. And then we can determine a, a date saying, submit information from the community that you've heard to district leadership by this date. That way, they have time to go through, organize it, and then hopefully be able to summarize and find some similarities. That could be an option as a compromise between the two because they would still be hearing from the community. You talked about how to connect the community to the district. That would be one way to do it. That's efficient.
And what I love about that, Erica, is I was talking to another board person that, that's not even in our district. And they were talking about how even sometimes they're utilizing software like to hold some of that information too. So, district staff or whoever is able to look at it as they need to and they're able to pull in. So, there might be some resources that we already have that we could kind of put that, that, that information that, that's coming into us. So, I love it.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts on how the board can involve and gather input from stakeholders? So, Patrick, what would be the date that you'd need the board to submit information to you by?
So, maybe we do it the first meeting in April after March 28th, right?
What are we asking them for information on?
So, I think what I heard President Hill say is that they would, you all would collect information, maybe recommendations you had, have we thought about this? And these are for large structural changes. We may have to come up and we may come to you with more of a charge, to your point, Kelly, like what are we really asking for? You know, to ask the community like how they might engage. I'm trying to read you right here and what you're looking for.
And I mean. If you're see, is this, is this about, go ahead, Erica.
Oh, I just wanted to clarify. My comments were more along the lines of the community emails us. And so, it wasn't like us soliciting information, but more or less relaying information of what the community is saying to district staff. We could do, I guess, the other way too, but that was what I was talking about.
I think, Kelly, I don't want to interrupt, sorry.
Yeah, so I, I just want to, what I'm trying to avoid is confusion from the community thinking that we're going to make these large sweeping decisions around school closure specifically. And that they're going to have input by emailing the board and then we're going, that, that is not what we're talking about. And that's what I wanted to clarify, just so there isn't any, you're talking about just general ideas of ways in which the, the district could be healthier, to engage in opportunities that might make us stronger, better, inventive ideas we could consider along the lines of redesign. We're not talking about those bigger decisions we might be making for subsequent years from the board's last meeting on Monday when we talked about still considering consolidations in the subsequent year, correct? I just want to clarify for the community, that's not what we're talking about.
Yeah, I think you would have to point us in, in some direction there if that was where you wanted to go.
Okay, thank you.
So. I'm struggling a little bit with having board members like create all this stuff from everything that's been sent to us because we've all gotten pretty much the same stuff. And I've spent a lot of time, lot of time responding to emails, pulling out what I think is what I need to deal with right in the moment. In order for me to do that, I would have to go back and revisit all the emails I've already looked at and read. So, and a lot of them are going to be not related to the questions that we're asking here, but really more related to the questions with, that we're going to answer on March 28th. So, my suggestion would be that if we, as a board, feel like we need to have a structure for this conversation, that we need to identify some way for the community to directly input their information into a database of some sort and then have it be gathered and processed rather than having it filtered through. I mean, they can still share ideas with us, but I, I think that it's more efficient to have people directly submit whatever information or ideas they want to share for consideration into some, like one place.
Like Thought Exchange?
In 150 characters or less, right. No, I mean, I, you know, I'm just, I'm thinking out loud, but I'm just, I'm. When you, when you put, when I saw this slide initially, Patrick, this conversation is not at all what I was thinking about, actually. So, I'm, I feel like I'm, I'm even like, not even in the same place as everybody else about this. Because I see this as being, this is a visioning conversation. But it's also going to be a conversation about rightsizing our operations in relation to our budget.
And Shannon, for me, like I feel like, I was like, yeah, you know, I think that we were talking about, you know, community input. We have a lot of different, a lot of different things that we could possibly be trying to have that input on and in ways that we can facilitate that. So, there are, there are individuals who are emailing us, you know, hey, here are some proposals that, for you to think about and can you send this on? And so, you know, opposed to that flowing through me, it'd be great if it could just flow through to whoever it needs to go to. So, if there is some structure for that. But if there are, you know, again, this more visioning stuff that's coming through, it would be really helpful if we had some sort of like board bank, I don't know, I'm just picking out a word from the sky, that, that we could put it into and categorize kind of what we were just talking about. So, I think that there's a lot of different lenses here. And I can understand why you're like, I'm not quite there yet because I'm over here because I think that there's different ways to look at this particular topic.
Yes, there are many ways to gather information because we get a lot of information. What I'm hearing from the district, they like clear, decisive direction on what the board believes will be the best way, efficient way to gather information.
Erica, I think I would feel more comfortable after we see the proposals, the outcome of March 28th meeting. I think I would be able to, be able to answer this question a little bit better for myself. I feel like if I make that answer right now, I may be confusing the community just as much as I'm confused right now. So, I would prefer to wait until after March 28th to be able to answer this question better. That way, I know budgetary, where we are. I'll have a better understanding. And then second, when I think about restructure, I may be thinking too large, the visionary stuff. So, I would rather, I'd feel more comfortable waiting till after the 28th.
So, then my, my question would be for the ones that we're receiving now in this tie, what is the best way to facilitate that? Do we have any thoughts on that?
You say the ones, what, what one?
The emails that we're receiving right now from community members when it comes to certain proposals, do we just continue to forward them on?
These proposals for savings, for direct revenue?
Organizations, they want to help. Whatever shape or form.
You can send them to me.
Okay.
Thank you for that conversation. We, we wanted to make sure we put a space for thinking about how we move forward. You're about to do some, well, you're doing really tough work right now. And it is good to have that place to be thinking about what could we do? What is possible? So, I appreciate that, you've given us a ton of feedback tonight. End of that conversation. Is there any other things you need to ask us or you want to make sure that we, we get in our notes before we bring? or you want to make sure that we, we get in our notes before we bring back a full articulated process to you next week?
Erica, could I ask one more, or offer one more thought to Patrick? So, in terms of this restructuring discussion, I think before we even identify how we want to gather input, we might consider that the board and the district leadership team need to do our own visioning work together. I mean, we have our strategic plan, we have our mission and vision. But I think in order for that process to start off successfully, you probably need a really clear idea from the seven of us of what, what are our priorities that we'll be looking for in that process and in those proposals before we create any structures for community feedback? Because what I, what I don't want to have happen is to go through that process and not have a shared vision of what we're, why we're going through the process, right? So, I, for instance, have a very strong belief that our district has to change the way we operate because our operations do not align with our, with our, with our funding sources. So, for me personally, this conversation is about aligning our district structure and our funding sources in order to achieve the goals of our strategic plan and to serve our students. I don't know that five, six, or seven other people, you know, five or six other people on the board believe that that is the highest priority. I feel like we need to, we need to have that conversation with district leadership to ensure that whatever process we embark on, we are embarking on it because we have a shared vision of what we hope to get out of it. So, I, that's maybe even like step before either of the bullet points on there. But I just wanted to say that because I, I want to set you up for success, both with the board and with the community over the next year as we have that conversation. But that means that the seven of us need to have a shared understanding with you as to what the work is that you're supposed to be doing.
Thank you.
I think also with that, begin thinking about restructure from a standpoint of once we find these cuts this year to balance the budget for some compensation to address deficit, we haven't arrived, so we're not, we're not there. There, to continue to address staff salary, maybe more cuts will need to happen next year. And so, just thinking about, yes, school closure is off the table for this year, is it back on the table for next year? So, begin thinking about a restructure from that standpoint of also reimagining, I think Shannon, to your point, reimagining how we deliver instruction. Again, as I said last week, is this an opportunity for us to do something different in terms of how we operate as a tool system?
And that was, I was taking some notes as we're giving our final thoughts here. Some of the emails I received from the community have been around that, the school closures conversation. We did agree as a board to take it off the table for the near short term, which means for the immediate next school year. But it could be, could be back on the table for the following school year. And so, thinking about what the 7 million, what we're finding now is how does that relate to, how does school closures potentially and the restructure relate to the 7 million that we're finding now? Could you provide some clarity on that for the community?
Well, I think your fellow board member, Paul Smith, said it really well. We sort of have to see where we are first at that first stage. And that may generate some more conversation. These two questions we just offered to get you thinking about that sort of down the line. I didn't expect some real, you'll notice there's no calendar after this one, right? And part of that was just to get you thinking a little bit about how you might move forward as, as I'm sure those are going to be challenging conversations on the 28th. Those would be pretty difficult, but that may, may get us thinking in a different way that we're not thinking now. We don't have to have that solution tonight. But it, but I think it just sets the table for how we move forward after that discussion.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, feedback for Patrick?
I just, since we've had a lot of conversation right here, I just want to just clarify for the community that what we are talking, just that timeline. So, if we can just real quickly go back to March and just look at what that timeline looks like again. And just so we can hear it one last time, I think that would be really helpful.
Okay, so, our team is going to meet tomorrow and talk through what we heard tonight and come up with a plan. We're going to look at providing you a prioritized list, is what I heard you say. One list, right, President Hill? One list in priority order, least harmed to kids. We're going to go as deep as we feel like we can go to give you options, understanding that you may not take every option. And that we're going to look at one, another meeting date in March. But one that you told us, you wanted us to make sure we had enough time to give you a good proposal, but also give the community enough time to react to the proposal that they see and give you feedback. But the date that we will be making these decisions is March 28th.
Thank you.
All right, do you have what you need from the board? You do?
I think so, Dr. Lewis?
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
So, we will go to public comment. We have Alicia Erickson.
Hello, I'm Alicia Erickson, and I appreciate all the discussion and the hard work you all are doing. A few of these things I've taken out, so I'll skip around because they don't apply currently. We do want to highlight specifically that Save Our Schools 497 is wanting to work in amplifying community voices and teacher and staff voices that feel like they're not being heard. And to that end, I hear you that categorizing that might be helpful. We've already started a survey and are planning on categorizing that into an Excel sheet. They'll be publicly available. And we are trying to do our own research to take out some of those options that are not applicable to try to have to be a first filter before coming to you. So, for example, capital outlay, we can let the people in the public know items that don't apply for that. So, that's already in process. We, it's been out about 48 hours and we have about 250 responses. And a majority of that is from teachers and staff right now. And then, a couple other things, we, we do want a more inclusive and accessible year-long budget process that will allow from the input from families and teachers, but also incorporate student, teachers, staff, and community, all community-based approaches. We ask for an opportunity for all teachers, teachers and staff to provide feedback, including principals at the elementary school level. They have some great ideas and are feeling very unheard, so we would like to work with them and work with you to maybe help bridge that gap. And talk about how we can best serve you and, and work with you on that and getting that information. And then, the last point I'd like to speak to is the equity impact tool. We ask that any budget items over a particular line amount, perhaps $100,000, should be evaluated on an individual basis for their equity influence and impact rather than lumped together into a group project as was before. And as the previous equity results were skewed from faulty data, we ask that those be reevaluated moving forward. And that's all I have today, thank you.
Thank you. Suzy Johannes.
Hello, my name is Suzy Johannes, she/her hers. I'm the parent of a Woodlawn student. I want to express my gratitude and appreciation for everyone. I know this is difficult and it's taken a lot of time. And I really appreciate the ability to talk and have the conversation. So, today I just wanted to talk about enrollment. And I know that we lost, you know, 1.5% of enrollment, 2019, 2020. We lost 6.1%, which was about 650 students a year after that. And then, this year, we only regained about 50 students. And I understand now about how that enrollment, we look back at the highest of the last two years. And so, why we're seeing this, expecting this decrease next year. And so, what I would, I'm here to say is that I would ask the district to pursue a purposeful campaign to bring students and parents back to our district. And I actually see the empty seats in our classrooms as being an opportunity to do that so that we don't have to, because I'm hearing there's this balance, like you can't have too many kids because then you have to have more teachers, we don't have more money. So, I'm seeing that the reason why we would want to close the schools is the reason why it's so great that they can stay open. And I would volunteer to help with this campaign if that's a thing. And also, specifically, I want to talk about out-of-district transfers. We have people who work in Lawrence who want to bring their kids to our schools because they're great and our teachers are great, our staff is great. And so, in, I'm not an expert on the rules, so I don't know the rules. But in 2019, 2020, we had 13 applicants, nine approved, four denied. 2020, 2021, 29 applicants, 25 approved, four denied. And then, in 2021, 2022, 58 applicants, 42 approved. We're currently serving 78 non-resident families. So, the process to apply from what I've heard is that if the school doesn't have the capacity or if it's after September 20th, we don't accept them. And then, maybe there's other reasons that could be denied. So, the parent has to apply to the school. They have to know what school has the low enrollment for their kids to go to, they have to apply to that school. If they're declined, they have to know that they have to then apply to another school because the district doesn't, from what I understand, forward that application on to the next school on the list. And they have to do all of that before that September 20th date in order to try to get their students in school here. And we don't have to pay transportation unless required by law. So, I've heard we can't afford the elementary schools. But I've also heard that the private schools waiting lists, they have waiting lists. And I just saw another private schools opening this fall. And so, I just thinking that we need to tell our story and just be really clear that we need our students back and do that purposefully. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzy. We're going to transition to virtual comment. Ty Edwards.
Okay, you can hear me now, I think.
Yes.
I'm Ty Edwards. I am a Deerfield parent. And I really appreciate the conversation that you've had today. This is exactly the kind of conversation I was hoping for last week and previously. So, thank you for this specificity. I think what we need is an annotated budget. We need it to be shared with the public and with the board. It needs to only include things that actually are legally able to be cut. It needs to have the line item name of it that's not jargon-y and abbreviated, so it's clear what it is. And then, we need any rationales or caveats that go with cutting that or what its implications would be. And then, it would be easy for building administrators or teachers and educators or the public to look at that, and it could be a spreadsheet, and rank their priorities so that they can understand how these cuts would look. It'd be really amazing if it was a real spreadsheet with math in it so that we could just change the formulas. We also need to have the restructuring conversation next year. That needs to be part of the academic year next year. These have to be separate discussions. It's going to be way too difficult for administration to have both of those projects going at once. And you can gather feedback from the public by using a Google form. It's easy, it tabulates all of the materials, people can put long-form answers, they can do checkboxes, they can rank things, it's free. And then, people's email isn't littered, it doesn't have to be tabulated later. You can easily just share that out with the public. So, I think these are ways that we can step, separate it out in phases, the way it was discussed. And I think those phases would actually help us make clearer decisions and we should follow that. Have an up to 5 million discussion now and a restructuring discussion next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ty. Kylie Luckett. Hi Kylie.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
Hello. So, first, just to start off, I want everyone to take a deep breath. I want you to unclench your jaw, take the tongue from the roof of your mouth and put it down. I am across the street working currently and I can feel some of the stress and tension that you guys are under. And so, take a second to just breathe because it's necessary. You're doing the hard work and you're doing it well, you're asking the good questions. I have gone back and forth with things that I wanted to say tonight. In part, a lot that I wish I would have been able to say last night. And originally, I wasn't going to speak to that, but now I do think it's necessary because I think we missed a big part of the story. And I think there's a lot of people who feel the way I do, who didn't reach out, who didn't say things for various reasons. And so, I own that I should have spoke out more and that I should have said more to, it is fiscally responsible, it is the prudent thing to do to, to look at these things and, and the way we should be doing it. Because on Tuesday, I talked to 10 people who have now said they are looking for jobs in other districts because they're either worried about their job being cut completely or they're worried about being moved into something that is just not going to, to work for them. And that, that's a hard place to be in and people don't like that indecisive area. Like we, you have to have a job. And some of these jobs are finite within a closed community. And so, I think it's important to note that no matter what school a child attends in Lawrence, they are loved, they are respected, they are cared for, they are encouraged. That is what we do as educators. And whether you live across the street from your building or you live in a different city, your school community can be that because that is what we shape it to be. And I truly feel as adults, we miss the mark in discussing the opportunity that comes through problems. I read a book with my students every year that's called, What Do You Do With A Problem? And it talks about, I have this problem, I didn't know where it came from, I didn't ask for this problem, I tried to hide from this problem, but it wasn't until I saw the opportunity and the problem that I was able to solve it. There is a lot of opportunity here that I feel like as adults, we have, we have not focused on enough. And so, when it comes to, as we continue to look at these cuts and things, one thing I would like to make sure that we do is get to specificities. When we look towards specifically things like cutting 75% of library media and learning coaches, what does that mean? 75% is a number, does that mean each school has a 0.25%? Today, in my building alone, we were short-staffed and I was assisted by my learning coach and my librarian because there was no one else to help me when there were multiple students in crisis and needed help. And so, they were able to come to my rescue and support me and help me. And that is what they do, that is what the teachers at my building do. They come together, they help, they work together. So, when we're looking at cuts-
Thank you, Kylie.
Yeah. Thank you for what you do, I appreciate everything. We're going to get through this, it is going to be tough. Things are tough, but so are we, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Tiffany Easley. Hi Tiffany.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I, my name is Tiffany Easley, she/her. I'm the librarian at Pinkney Elementary. Thank you Kylie for the shout-out for librarians. And as a librarian, this is the things that I know. I know that a third grader has read every single book about Biscuit, A Loveable Dog. I know that elephant and piggy books make an entire first grade class laugh so much that another teacher across the hall comes to see what all the fun is about. I know that learning to code is one of the few areas in school where a second grader feels confidence. I know the pride on a kindergartner's face when she drew a tiger and I told her it was beautiful, because it was. I know that helping deliver books around the school each Monday isn't just a movement break, but also a time for a fourth grader to talk to another trusted adult about their life. I know that each morning, I will greet one of my newest shining stars at the front door. She will either be full of smiles or have tears pulling in her eyes. She is new this year. I know that she will ask me to walk her to the nearby stairs before she heads to class. She will ask for a hug. This is a bond that we have created over our shared anxieties and love of Harry Potter. I know that a group of fourth graders have read- I know that a group of fourth graders have read every single book in our library that feature LGBTQ plus themes because it helps them feel seen. I know that every Tuesday at 2:55 PM, a third grader will leave every dinosaur book on the shelf lying on the floor, all open to different pages as he jumped from book to book because that is the one way that he finds joy and comfort. I know the energy in a room full of kindergartners checking out a book for the first time, all of them asking me to read theirs to the class. I know the feeling of seeing a student create a masterpiece out of Legos, marbles, and pipe cleaners, even though that morning, he failed a reading test. I know the look on his face when I tell him that he is clever and creative and that I am proud. I know that a fifth grader who told me he didn't like to read four years ago has devoured all eight Amulet graphic novels this year. I know the connections that kids make in their own lives when I read them a story about someone who did great things. I know how to find the mirrors and books for my students, but also how to direct them to books with windows and to places and people unlike them. I know this because I know them. I know what it feels like to see tears in kids' eyes when they learn that their library and librarian may not be there next year. I know that I've been told to focus on the data and not the emotions. I also know that a library is filled with stories that someone decided needed to be told, stories that cannot be quantified, only written and spoke about. I know that these stories I have shared with you today exist in all of our schools because of librarians and libraries. Stories that may someday make it onto one of our shelves and checked out with the help of a librarian. I know that a lot of difficult decisions are needing to be made, and I urge you to consider the unintended consequences of cutting library budgets. Without libraries and librarians, these stories may never get to be told. Thank you.
Thank you Tiffany. John Casey. You said they're there?
They are here, but I cannot have them to a call and I'm not sure why.
Okay. Can you hear us?
Am I here finally?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thanks. So my comment tonight, I wanted to direct toward what I've learned over the reviewing data from various committees over the last few weeks. I have not been engaged before that, and maybe that's wrong. But now I'm trying to come up to speed on this stuff. I am interested in being involved in this as a community member for the long haul as we go through the immediate crisis and also the restructuring. But what I've noticed in the meetings is that some of the data, some of the documents that have been provided to those meetings have only provided summaries, and they haven't always provided really good data that backs up the projections that are being presented. In the community, you know, some of our best sources of information are like board docs and things that get said in the newspapers and things like that. It's really hard to try to understand kind of what's incorporated into a summary like this when we get revised figures. After the recent problems with the data given to BPEC, all I could find were revised summaries, and I looked around quite a bit. Without the full data that backs a proposal, how can the board assess the contents of a proposal appropriately? How can the community judge the actions that are being proposed? How can we understand the assumptions that went into those proposals and the biases? Community, how can the community express their own ideas and their desires and priorities in an informed way? Everyone makes mistakes, that's totally normal. And we have to expect that, especially in a complicated process. But without full transparency and the data that backs the numbers that we provide, we have no chance of catching those mistakes. And I come from a background in open source software. And the premise in open source software is that many eyes find the bugs. If we hide this data, if we just don't publish it, and then by accident hide it, or hide it behind jargon, which provides a gate so that people who are not expert in this field, like me, can't really understand what's going on, then those mistakes are going to stay baked into our process and they're eventually going to come down and wind up hurting our kids. Everyone brings bias to any process, everyone. It's important to understand that about ourselves and each other and review each other's work to help reduce the impact of those biases. You know, what I come back to is there's a reason math teachers want you to show your work. Complicated things are easy to get wrong. And in compiling proposed cuts, it should be possible to preserve the figures that are used to arrive at those proposals. Please publish this so the community can participate in an informed way. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, that brings us to the end of our meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
This is K, I have a motion to adjourn.
Do you have a second?
Shannon, I second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried, meeting's adjourned, thank you.